...to order, please stand for the pledge. Before we get started, I'd just like to welcome our colleagues from the Unified School District. And it's a good venture for us to sit together and talk and share information. So with that, I'll call the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hutchins?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Candia? Mayor Protem Martina? And Mayor Kate?
Present.
Roll call for the new president, Mr. Bizar.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Conforty?
Yes.
Mrs. Searns?
Here.
And the chair, Mr. Conforty, is here.
Okay, I am from the public, I'm Jim DeIvan, I'm a member of the public, I'm in the school district. Now, we'll adjourn to the joint meeting with the new president of the Unified School District and City Council.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to welcome the school district, the Unified School District Board to our facility. We actually really contemplated if we had a joint meeting, could we fit enough? Do we have enough space to fit everybody? And it looks like we, it worked out really well. So again, welcome to our, to our facility. Tonight, we're going to have a, just a joint meeting, really to discuss the Northwest Newman Master Plan. It's a mixed-use project that's going to be moving forward here with the city real shortly. So I have a PowerPoint presentation for you. You can follow it on your screens as well as I did the printout for you, if you want to take some notes. Just to introduce kind of who's going to be on our project team. Myself, I'll be, I'll be the lead for the city. Our planner, Ms. Ocasio, who's due back from maternity leave next week, she'll, she'll come back and assume the role of the kind of more of the project lead. We have a consulting project manager, George Osner. George used to be the planning manager for the city of Modesto. Our consulting team will be Jerry Hague, who's actually doing the master plan preparation themselves. And Lamthea Gregory will be doing our environmental impact report. Tonight, again, just to welcoming, I want to talk to you a little bit about, give you an introduction into the master plans and what they are and why we use them. Talk a little bit about the plan area and the concept of the man, of the, of the plan. Talk a little bit about the environmental review process, also known as SEQA. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the school district and its role in this process and, and its important role. And then at the very end, I thought we'd have a question and answer session. If, again, I think this is going to be more of a free dialogue, questions as we go forward. And at the very end, we can just wrap up with any questions or any questions that may not have been answered throughout the, throughout the presentation. So, so what is a master plan? Really, a master plan is a city, it's a long-term planning tool that we use to help guide development. Back when we did our general plan in two thousand five through two thousand seven, in which Board Member Wallace was, was a member of it. It was really set out because the community wanted neighborhoods built, not just subdivisions. And, and there's a big difference between building a subdivision and building a neighborhood. So they wanted something that was cohesive. So they wanted something that coordinated plan for not only the infrastructure, but also how services were going to be provided to that new area. And those services are, you know, police, fire, water, sewer, school. A lot of those services that not only our organization, but your district as well provide. Also, the master plan kind of serves as a blueprint for what, again, that area's going to be, what the policies are. And it'll talk a little bit about development standards as part of that. So what is a master plan? A master plan is not a proposal for development. Again, it's a blueprint for if development should occur, occur, this is how it should occur. But it doesn't mandate development, as we see here. It does not force development, that says redevelopment, but it does not force development. So if you're a landowner in that area, you're not going to be forced to develop unless you want to develop. So why even propose a master plan? One, is to be prepared, there, there's a landowners group out there that, that started to move forward, but the economy stopped that process. The city's interested in it because there's commercial out there, there's business park out there as part of this master plan. There's a potential to create a lot of jobs for our community. So we wanted to be able to capture that. Again, like I said here, to encourage economic development. The, the purple area that you're seeing there is, is what's called an enterprise zone. An enterprise zone is a state designation that allows tax credits to businesses who locate there. They could potentially receive up to thirty-five thousand dollars per employee for locating in those districts. Or any business that's located in this area here, such as Mr. Wallace, your business is in the enterprise zone. If you bought equipment, you could write off some of the sales tax that you had to pay on that equipment. If you hire certain qualified employees, you're eligible for those tax credits. For anybody else that has businesses in here. So a large portion of our master plan area, almost a hundred acres, would be in this enterprise zone. So again, it's a real attractant for businesses to locate to the area. And also, we do a master plan because it, it provides a lot of opportunities for the public property owners, and in this particular case, the school district, to provide input into the process. So we hold public meetings. Last month, we held a public meeting for the, all the property owners. We notified all the property owners within the area about the meeting and everybody who lives, owns property within five hundred feet. So unfortunately, it wasn't as well attended as we would have hoped. Again, going back to our general plan, as you can see here, the center part is the city and you can see all the smaller lots in there. Now, if you look here, we have areas, you have Area 1R, 2R slash BP. In this particular case, there's Area 3, which is R slash BP. R stands for residential, slash BP stands for business park. So the area that we're going to be looking at right now is Area 3. What does each area mean? Again, the general plan steering committee thought that these areas would best be defined as neighborhoods. And there's really a geographical situation that occurs out in the field. If you look at Area 5, Area 5 borders Orestimba to the north, Hoyer to the south, existing city limits, and then it goes out to the canal. Those are some natural barriers there that really kind of define it as a unit. So they thought, well, let's plan that unit as a full neighborhood. Again, going back to it, in this particular case, we're going to be looking at Area 3 today. Are there any questions at this point? Again, per, per the general plan, it says, it says, "Before any master plan area can be annexed to the city of Newman and developed, a master plan shall be approved by the city, consistent with all the goals and policies of the general plan and contributing towards achieving Newman's vision." Again, we want to, we want to take a comprehensive look at what we're creating and making sure that it's consistent and enhances the quality of life for our residents. Not detract, so we're not subsidizing the project. How is this project going to enhance the city of Newman through its development? Again, there's the, there's the location of, of this particular project site. As you can see, to the north is Stir Road. On the east side is Highway thirty-three of the railroad tracks. It comes all the way down to the existing city limit lines here. Again, on the south would be the existing city line, limit line here. And then it goes up to the Jensen Road Extension as it comes all the way out to the canal. And then again, up, along the canal, up to, to Stir Road. And all told, it's approximately three hundred and seventy-five total acres.
Michael, just a quick question on that.
Sure.
Because I wasn't able to, able to attend the meeting we had with the public. What, how's that, how are we going to be affected by the one-to-one thing that the county is throwing it out as far as agriculture?
That, that's an excellent question. So I think for, for members who weren't following, there's a group called LAFCO. It's called the Local Agency Formation Commission. It's a countywide commission. And what they've done is they've put a requirement on annexation. You have to preserve one acre of ag land for every acre of residential land you annex into your city. Now, there are some other parameters that go along with that. So Dawn, or Councilmember Hutchins, if you don't mind, I'm going to write that down and maybe at the very end of the Q and A, we can talk a little bit more about that.
Okay, that's fine.
And Dawn, Dawn's fine.
Okay, moving forward. Again, so here, here's the, the land uses there that are involved in that. We're going to go through those a little bit. So the yellow area that you see is what's called planned mixed residential. Now, planned mixed residential is again, was something that was created by the general plan steering committee. What it calls for is the residential uses in there. Seventy-five percent of those residential uses are going to be single-family residences. Fifteen percent is going to be a medium-density residential, which is, could be a couple of different things. More, could be a small lot detached unit. It could be townhouses. It could be apartments, but it's, it's really in the average of about eight to twelve units to, to the acre. And then the last ten percent is high-density residential. And a high-density residential, as I recall, is going to average about fifteen units to the acre. The cross-tache area that you're seeing out there are areas that we are going to call very-low-density residential. Now, very-low-density residential is two to three units to the acre. So really, what we're going to be looking at is ten thousand square foot lots. And the reason we're doing that is, and it was a conscious decision by the general plan steering committee, is, if you think about it, is there really is no area in this community for people to build a custom or a semi-custom house. So with some of the development that's occurring here on the west side, let's just take Amazon.com that's going into Patterson. Think about their management and their mid-management. You know, those people are, are some of the, more of the higher-end people. If they wanted to move to Newman, all they would really have to offer, some of our older neighborhoods, yes, or one of just our standard subdivisions. There's no real place for them to build and create their own semi-customer, custom home. So they made a conscious decision out there to try to attract some of the executives and mid-level management people here on the west side to move to Newman because of our charm. And that would help with our demographics in the long term. And we can do that by setting aside that area. In this particular case, that very-low-density area, we're looking, it's going to be about sixty to seventy lots out of this whole project area, which is not a lot, but you know, if you can, you know, five to six a year, you're still looking at a ten-year build-out over there. And I think there's a lot of people in the community that, you know, would love to have that type of opportunity to build that type of facility, or that type of residential unit and live in it in this community. So, so that's why that's set aside over there. The light blue, again, is the medium-density residential, and you're seeing it down there in that bottom part. At this point in time, while the general plan is showing that it's medium-density residential, as I move forward into the plan, we're going to show that more as community commercial, which is more of a shopping center type area over there. Again, we just think that'll be a better mix on the highway. It's going to have less impact on those existing residential adjacent to it. And also, when you're doing community commercial, you want to make sure you have the correct lot width, the depth ratio, so that you can get larger retail establishments to come into our community. And then, as, as I say, the, the gray would be business park, and again, community commercial is there. The area right here, if you look on your screen, my, my mouse is on it. That right now, you're seeing it as yellow. That is actually in our, in our, in our re- rendition, is something that came out of our meeting with the property owners, is we're going to propose that to be professional office. And again, you're having some residential units over there. Professional office is really an eight to five kind of use. So it'd be low-impact, but it's also job generation, they can get more jobs out in that particular area. So, so when you add up the area over here, the business park, the community commercial, and then you put that professional office in there, you have about a hundred acres of job-generation land. Just conservative estimates put that at twelve-hundred to fifteen-hundred jobs, which is a significant number of jobs for our community. It's actually on the ratio of about one-to-one. One job for every house that's going to be, would be prepared as part of this project. Existing uses out there, as you can see, these are the property lines out there. Most of these have some type of ag use in them. The yellow, these are all the residential properties that are out there currently right now. We do have a couple of industrial properties. And then ultimately, right there in the corner, there's a kind of, there's kind of a commercial setup. So really, now, where we're going to go into is the concept plan. And this is where we're at as part of the project. And this is where we want to get the school district involved. So as you can see here, again, that HDR, again, please excuse that, that HDR, which was high-density residential, is now being looked at as professional office. Otherwise, from your perspective, from the board's perspective, the important piece is, is where are we going to locate our school? Right now, in having the conversation with some of the members, we've had some conversations at the two-on-two level, have conversations with the, with the superintendent, but now we're doing with the full bor, board is proposing an elementary school out in this particular area out there. So on this particular site here, the elementary school site that is set aside in that particular one is about ten-point-two acres. And then we're also showing that P3 is a park. So there is a park adjacent to the, to the school site. But what we want to talk about is, is, you know, there are some pros and cons with the, the current location of the school. The pros are, you know, it's, it's early in development, you can make sure that your infrastructure is there, your site's reserved, so when you're ready to build it, your site is ready. Also, by having across the street, by having business park, potentially, you could have some overflow parking in case you had a big event. You could use some of the business park hours, business park parking over there to, to accommodate some of the, the school functions. Most of the large school functions typically happen in the after-hours, which would be different than, than the business park itself. But the way we've set this up is, and that's one of the questions we're going to be talking to you. We can relocate this school to a different area. Let's say the board says, you know, we really don't like being across from a business park. Okay, why don't we see about moving it over to PMR six? It's about the same acreage. When you add the school and the park site, that's about sixteen-point-four acres. When you go to, when you go to PMR six, by God, that's sixteen-point-four acres right there. And at a potential location, you could move it to PMR three, maybe turn it sideways a little bit, you can get a school site there. And potentially, also in PMR nine, you could get rid of that road, and then you could have a school site there as well. So some of the things to think about is how many major roads, we, do you want a school next to it? This is going to lead me to our next slide. Again, planned mixed residential is there. Got some very-low-density stuff out here on the side. Again, that HDR is now being converted to professional office. And then we have some community commercial down there.
Michael?
Yes?
Do you intend to move HDR to have a high-density residential section someplace else, then?
We do, we do, and we're still working on that right now. That HDR site is roughly, because it's ten percent, you're looking at about a hundred and thirty units. So we'll have to find about a eight to ten acre site somewhere else in this planned mixed residential.
Mike?
Yes?
Mike, on the, the southern boundary of what was the HDR is, what is that?
That is a residential area.
Yeah, I was just wondering, what's going to connect this? If you make that into business, professional office, it kind of, it's going to be sitting out there by itself, isn't it?
Not necessarily, because you have Jensen's right there. Jensen's will be a major road through this project site here. It can also be fed by Fig Lane here. So you'll, you'll, Fig Lane is considered a collector road. And I believe Jensen is either going to be, is also a major collector as well, so traffic, traffic can go.
I hope they widen it, board, yes.
And they will. We'll go a little bit above Buggy Lane. We might give it another five feet or so, I don't think people can really pass. So I'm going to, I'm going to go into a little bit of the EIR before we get, get more into the school district, excuse me. Okay, EIR stands for Environmental Impact Report. It's, it's done under SEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. It's a disclosure, and it allows the city to take action on a project. It identifies environmental impacts of the plan, determines what mitigation measures or alternatives can be implemented to offset some of those impacts. And again, only following certification of the EAR as complete and accurate can the city take action on the plan. So where are we now? We just finished up our NOP, which was in March this last year. Now, we're getting ready to, again, go into the technical analysis and start finalizing our master plan proposal, which is why we're here with the board, because we're seeking input from, from you. After that point, we'll have a draft plan and a draft EIR. We're hoping those come out this summer. And then we'll send those out to all the affected agencies, including the Newman-Crows Landing Unified School District, for review and comment. And then ultimately, if we have to revise the plan, we'll do that. We'll have to prepare, prepare responses for anybody who submits comments to our EIR. We have to respond to those. And then hopefully, at the end of thirteen, but probably looking at the first quarter of two thousand fourteen, we'll probably start having city council hearings and planning commission hearings, and then ultimately get into LAFCO, probably around that second quarter of two thousand fourteen. So, so let's talk a little bit about what we think the role of the school district needs to be in, in some of this right now. One of the things that we, we, we're asking the school board to think about is, is the school site that's out there, there's two things that you can do. We, we plan an elementary, and there's sometimes the elementaries go K through five, and also some schools, some districts do K through eight. I know in this district, we do a lot of K through five. And the reason why it's important, whether we get the direction is K five or K eight, is because of size of the property. A K five is about a ten, ten-five, ten-point-five acre site. You start getting into K eight, you need to get up to about fifteen or sixteen acres, which kind of mixes in with the block sizes that we have. Also, we needed, what's important to the, to the school district when they think of where they want to site a school? I mean, you have the new site out there at, at Barrington, okay? And you have a major collector, Barrington on the backside, and you have, I think it's just the Liptis on the front. So you know, you have two main arteries that people can come in to feed that. So, you know, we want to talk a little bit about that. That particular site, I know there's a parking lot in between, but have the board given consideration? I know I've had some preliminary conversations with Superintendent Feld, but have you given any thought to whether you'd like to have a school next to a park? Or, or not? You know, and that's really a board decision. I think you need to look at the pros and cons of both, but there's a way to, to share those facilities. I know Superintendent Feld shared with me some, some good examples of, of districts that have done that very well. But there are also districts, I'm sure, that have not done it well. So you got to give good consideration into the final design if you want to have a park next to the, the school site. Ultimately, if you, if, if you do decide that, you know, the true winners are the residents, because you have that much more public space that's available for the children to play. And you can do that through some environmental designs and some fencing stuff and a few weather things, and, and some agreements with the city and the district that really, of how that's going to occur. So we'd like you to think about that.
Michael?
Yes?
When, there, there were two parks shown, and I think in our two-plus-two, what we had talked about was that one park would likely be a development like a softball or a soccer complex. And then the park next to the school would likely be something more like Barrington Park or Sherman Park or something like that that's open with play structures and grass. Is that correct?
That's correct. So if you look at your screen now, I brought up the, the land plan again. So really, what Board Member Wallace is speaking about is P two and P three are what we call more passive parks. Sherman Park is that way, Barrington. Barrington's more of an active, because you've got the ball fields on there. But if you think about Sherman, most of the time, except for soccer, it's a passive one. Families can go out there, they can throw the ball, you can fly kites, you can play on the playground. There's not that many facilities. But if you swing way out to P one, way on the end, you can't really see the riding there, but that's planned as a sports park out there at the end, at the end of the road there, and that's about ten acres. At this point, we envision that being a baseball-slash-softball complex. Then, when you come to P four, P four will be similar to what you're seeing in Sherman, which is a dual-use of basin-slash-park. Now, and again, Superintendent Feld has some good experience with this in, in Turlock, where those types of facilities are also well-utilized for soccer. So maybe P four could be a soccer complex, and maybe we can get two sets of lively fields on there. And it's tiered down depending on the different levels. So one tier would be, you know, if you have a ten-year flood event, which is very common, you'll get a little bit of water down there. And it won't go up to the next tier until you get to like a fifty-year event. And that'll stay dry most of the year, and then, and you keep tiering them up. So that way, you're fully utilizing, you have to have storage for, why not utilize that as park space?
When you look at like the Bush Rose Park that we have now?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about? That's sunken.
That's similar, but that one's all sunken. So really, what all that really is, I mean, we call it a park, but it's really a basin with grass on it. This one would be more tiered. So when you look at Sherman, there's sunk down here, and then there's a raised part, like where the playground and, and the snack bar is. That's supposed to stay dry all the time.
All right.
And the water would come up a little bit. And this particular one here, you might have, like at Sherman, you would have one all the way down the bottom. And you'd have another level that might get flooded, maybe five percent of the time. And then you would have a third level that would never gets, it's not supposed to ever get flooded.
From, from the size point of view, is, is P four, is that roughly the same size as either of those two that we've been mentioning, Sherman?
It's actually bigger. Sherman is about eight acres, just over eight acres. P four, at this point in time, is, is calking out around ten acres. So just a little bit bigger than that.
My, if I may add, a, an acre is just about the size of a football field. So when you look at a ten-acre park, you could probably easily put nine football fields or soccer fields. And if you're using it tiered, you know, as you said, at different levels of water, you can either have it completely dry or you may have, you know, two-thirds of it open, or, you know, maybe a third might be underwater. But yeah, you could get about nine soccer fields or football fields onto a, a ten-acre lot.
Right, and the idea is, is on these basins, it really only has water in there for a few days after a big event, and then it dries out. If you've gone down Folkhurst, right before you get to the railroad tracks, there's a residential development there, there's a nice big park, and it's all sunken in, that's actually a storm drainage basin. But they get to utilize it as a park because they've grassed it. So then, you've turned something where in Fresno, I don't know, I may have been to Fresno, their basins are just dirt and they're full of water. Here, we actually get to utilize the space by putting grass on it and, and utilizing it for practice facilities or just playing or parties.
Is the area in Patterson near the Walmart? I think it's on the other side of CBS. It's sunken with grass. Is that a, a catch basin, but they use it as a park?
I know, I, I, Patterson does utilize these types of facilities where they're, they're dual-use, they're a dual-use park, yes.
West of Walmart.
Yeah, yeah.
Siri's also has numerous of these. They have a lot of their softball fields built down into these basins.
Are they irrigated at all, other than rainwater?
No, they're, they actually, yeah, you put full irrigation systems in.
Okay.
So, just like at Sherman Park, it's a full irrigation system. You'll, you'll see the city operating and maintaining a full irrigation system with the cycle, so that way you keep the grass healthy and active.
Yeah, the best example of this type of park is actually on Christopherson and Walnut, just north of the Turlock Junior High, just southeast of Pittman High, and it's three tiers. And the most eastern side is the lowest, and when, we have a big storm, it's going to fill. Very rarely does a second tier fill, and the third tier, the highest on the west end, is always open and dry. But it's there, when you have a large storm, you know, you dump your wastewater into that area, and then it dries up. But it does provide a lot of practice facilities or, or, you know, recreational soccer facilities.
It's a use.
Environment, environmental management, where? Where P one is, it's close, it's right by the canal, correct?
P one is by the canal, yes.
Do you, do we have to worry about, or does a town have to worry about how people, you know, fertilizing their ground and that, and that water becoming possibly contaminated?
No.
No, it's, it's safe that way.
Yeah, that, that is currently under ag production at this point in time. So anything that's going on there, again, the canal would be above this, this playground, this play surface here, so we do not foresee that being an issue. Yeah, there's a lot of controls on what type of applications that you can put in parks. And a lot of them are designed to be, one, healthy and friendly to the users as well as the environment.
Okay, Michael, so if we used PMR three, in order to get to the park, they'd have to cross the street or Stenba, right? That's what we're looking at here?
PMR three is up in this particular area. Or Stenba, no, Orstembah's way down below. The, where my cursor is right now.
I can't tell what street that is.
Yeah, where my cursor is right now, that's Jensen.
What's the street that, that's Jensen?
That's the Collector Road. The one you're looking at right now, is this one right here? Is the Collector Road, yes.
And that doesn't exist right now, correct?
Does not exist right now.
Okay. Now, let's say we were to build the school in the site that you have, the blue site, the original one. What would be the barrier between that and the business park?
A road.
A road, okay.
Also, Michael, to get, because students here won't all be K through six or K through eight, getting to Orstembah, they have to, they have to go over Jensen, which will now be a fourth, a two-lane road or a four, a four-lane road, right? Or two and a half?
If you follow my cursor and I'll start at Highway thirty-three and Jensen. As we move, as we move westward, this is four lanes. Big lane, you're still at four lanes. Cross past Harden, you're still at four. And then you come to this point here, which is again, an undeveloped road at this point in time. That's when it would convert to a two-lane road.
So then one of the things we'd have to worry about is how we get our older students from this area over to Orstembah.
Yes.
Because they would be in walking distance.
One of the reasons why you, Harden doesn't go all the way through, basically as our traffic engineer indicated to us, we would want this kind of separation from again, from the eastern edge of PMR ten to the western edge of P four. You would want that kind of distance before you would have two controlled intersections. So the intersection right here between PMR seven, P four, and this right here, that would be a controlled intersection, meaning, and I don't know if that means there's a light at this point or if a stop sign at this point, but it would be a controlled intersection where cars have to stop. That would allow pedestrians to cross the street safely.
Is there a possibility of building a overpass like, I think it's out in Riverbank?
That's by Johansson High School in East Modesto.
He Knox has one.
Very expensive.
Yeah, and I think at this point, I mean, we could talk to our traffic engineers. I don't think the amount of traffic coming through their warrants and overpass. Now, the, the Johansson one, I mean, there's a lot of cars that are going there. Was it Clarabelle?
Claus.
Claus, yeah. There's a lot of cars traveling up and down that road at all times. So in this particular one, I don't know that they would have that level of traffic.
Mike, excuse me, what's the total acreage in this area?
The total acre-
The entire area for the PMR?
Yeah, for, for the PMR, okay.
For the entire?
Yeah, you're looking at roughly, with the exclusion, it's about two hundred acres. You're gonna look about two hundred acres of residential.
And so what would be the, the center as far as you were going to look at a, like a, the, the center of this area as far as perimeter, as far as locating the school? If you wanted it to be kind of the hub of the area?
If you wanted to locate this in the center, I would probably make the recommendation that you look at PMR six. If you, if you really look at that, there's really not much that is outside the walking distance. Probably half to three-quarters of a mile from any edge. It's about what you're looking at there.
If, if you build this completely out in the way that you've got it with the zone or planned out, how many people expect to be in this area?
No, I can do the quick math for you, I kind of apologize. These are pretty good-sized streets. You're probably looking in that four thousand to forty-five hundred range.
And, and while you developed this portion of Newman, are you essentially holding, well, you're not holding existing neighborhoods static. You're gonna have some growth in, I'm thinking that area around Barrington particularly. I mean, there's a lot of property that can be still developed there.
There's still approximately two hundred and twenty-five-ish lots available in Sherman Ranch, which is east of your Barrington school site.
All right, and then there's, there's a few other areas in town that are, that have some, that have developed lots or-
Correct.
So, but, but the-
We have less than, we have less than three hundred finished lots in the community. Yeah, and then there's another, trying to do the math a bit, another seventy, seventy-five approved lots, but haven't been developed. And that's at the south end of Prince.
And, and just to help me out, because I don't know how many people you sort of expect to be in each of these lots, but if we're talking about this is four thousand, forty-five hundred people, when it's totally built out, the other lots that are in the Newman area that could be potentially built out at the same time, I guess, how many people do they represent?
We, based upon, based upon Department of Finance figures, we figure it's three point three people per house. So that's about another, I think, just say there's four hundred. Another twelve to fifteen hundred on the other side as well.
I'll follow that up. The formula I've used in the past as far as generating students per house, in this case, I don't have houses, we have lots. I counted thirteen hundred and fifteen lots. About that is about point five eight students per house. These aren't houses, these are lots, that's not right.
How many?
Point five eight. And typically what we've used is K six is point three two students, seven, eight, point oh nine, and nine, twelve, point one seven. But the thirteen hundred and fifteen lots, again, aren't houses because some are medium and apartments. But it would, the area would generate about seven hundred and sixty students if you just counted lots using that formula. And you'd have about four hundred and twenty K six. That was a formula I've had, not K five. About a hundred and eighteen seventh and eighth graders and about two hundred and twenty-three high school students that this area would produce as far as, and again, that's built out.
Right.
So you'll be looking at an elementary school of, you know, about four hundred. Or again, depending on high density, medium density, or low density, but-
I mean, doesn't it also have sort of something to do with the, the, I don't want to say the demographics, but the, the economics? I'm guessing that if you, you have that area to the west that is low density, extremely low density housing, and you're going to be expecting people who are quite well off to be buying in, building in there. I don't really know if that means that they're going to be up in years, but I'm gonna guess that it might mean they're up in years and they're less likely to have children. I, and again, you could correct me and say, Tim, that's nonsense. That's not how we've seen it anywhere else. But it, it seems to me like you might be able to say that you're gonna have more schoolchildren in the areas where you have cheaper housing.
And I should let the, the board know as part of this master plan process, there is an analysis on the impact on the schools. So our consultants will work with your staff about student generation rates and everything that's going on out there and saying, okay, these are the numbers that we're coming up with. Do you concur with those numbers? And this is how we got to those numbers. And then that, that's another role that the school district plays a role, plays a part in is your staff will be working with the consultants to make sure that the numbers that we're generating and saying, this is the impact on your schools, that you are comfortable with how they got to those numbers. So, and again, if we use, I'm, I'm sorry, Ruth, if we use the numbers that Superintendent Feld is and we talk about the Barrington School, which is about a four to five hundred student school, we build the same type of school here, that's about basically how many kids would be in this neighborhood. So you wouldn't necessarily have to bus them somewhere else. That full build-out, the idea would be that that school could accommodate people who live in that area.
Michael, is there a possibility of rather than the school building, the school building, that the builder would, you know how some, in some areas, a builder builds the school instead of the school district building the school? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, and if you can see on my bottom slide there, and that's one of the ones, that's one of the questions, developer build option. Well, and that's ultimately going to be up to you as a board. Now, if you, what would make that easier is if the board decided, hey, we really like Barrington School. We like the way it's functioning, we like the layout of it, we want to reuse those plans. It does two things for you. One, you don't have to spend the money on the plans other than maybe update them on some of the change orders or some of the other things that you had there. So you're probably saving yourself, you know, close to a hundred thousand dollars just in architectural fees and reviews by the state in time. Then you could hand those plans off to developer and ask him, hey, what do you think you could build this facility for? But you know, part of that is, is you know, getting hardship monies and some of the other things. So I think that's going to be something that the board needs to consider as you move forward into this process and start looking at the pros and cons of having a developer build school as part of that. But I can tell you though, you can save money if you have found that that design that you use at Barrington works really well for you. If you can reuse those plans, it's gonna save you a lot of money. I know, I think the, I want to say the city, the district of Series utilizes the same plans and tries to get that plan a little bit better and reuse that plan and rebuild that school. And that saves them money.
Michael, I'm not certain, but if a developer does it, does that mean Melrose?
No, Melrose is, Melrose is a financing district, so.
Okay.
It could or it could not, but one thing that you, one thing that you evaluate as you go through the developer build process and you get together with the, if you find a developer that wants to work with you and you do that, you look at how many, you look at the fees that would be generated from this type of project here and see if it could sustain itself through that project. And, and that's just one way to do it. There's more than one way to do a developer build option and I'm not an expert at that. But if that is something that you're, you really want to explore, there are many people much more knowledgeable than I that could give you a full presentation on that.
I think Delhi Unified is the closest school district that had the developer build their, their senior, I don't, their high school. I think typically you have to look at two, how many developers will be in this area?
Right.
I mean, is it one developer? It could be four or five developers. Reach a similar agreement with all the developers that build out here. And I think usually you have to reach some type of agreement where you waive your developer fees that are required as they build. So you know, when, when an area grows, not all your students would be at this school until it's built. They're gonna be across the district, temporary housing quite often until the school's built. So it's complicated. It's simple if it's one builder and it's simple if it fills up very quickly to fill all those seats too. But I think it's definitely worth looking at. And again, to my, that's my knowledge, Delhi is the closest school district that has done this.
I think in Delhi, they did not design their own school. The developer handed them a school, if I'm not mistaken about that.
Again, I think you could, there's as many examples as there are probably districts. So you really find out what, what you're comfortable with as a board and then try to find a partner that, that can do it with you and then move forward with it on it. But I think a great start again is the evaluation of, of your new middle, your new elementary school that's out there. And evaluating that use and, you know, are the teachers happy with the layout? Are the administrators happy with the layout? Does it really facilitate, you know, keeping the buses separate from the parent drop-off? And you know, these are all things that, you know, you really don't think about it until you get on a board and you start hearing parents talk to you about it. But if you're not having some of those complaints, then you start evaluating that, well, maybe this is actually a good plan. Maybe we can recreate that. So then you work with us and you say, hey, we like that. And so, you know, our, our current configuration is, you know, X feet Y by a hundred feet long. We try to get you in that same type of ratio that allows that facility to be built. I mean, you've got a nice beautiful grass area in the back, right? And then you've got a nice little hard-topped area that kids can play games on and then you have your, your learning center. There are things that work really well there, I think, but again, I don't work there. But if those are things that you like, then you know, we can get those and try to build that in with the layout here. And maybe PMR three, which might be a little bit skinnier than nine, but we can know if, let's just go back for one second, I'm sorry, and go to PMR six. If you like that because it's very centrally located, these roads aren't in stone because they're not built. We can slide that over a little bit. We can slide it one way or another to accommodate a width depth ratio that you like. And to accommodate, you know, a school site that you've already built and say, we want to use this site again and this is what's important to us. And we can do that.
Michael, quick question. The arrow down at the bottom that then goes to the dotted line, is that the reroute into Orstembah High School?
Yes, this, Councilman Hutchins is asking about this area down in here. Again, this is a recommendation of our traffic engineer. And again, it's based upon the separation of this intersection fig and this collector on to the west. And you have to have that complete separation there. We talked about just making that a cul-de-sac because, you know, people take the shortest route possible and do a few things on there. So we're trying to facilitate what's the safest and easiest way to get people into that site. And he thought that that might be general, generally an area here that could be accommodated. Either the final or it's not, it's still a penciled-in area. We would still have to work out a lot of those details on what that is and what that looks like.
Well, and also I believe, Michael, one of the things is the, well, the area I live in now, Caya Lane and up in, or drive up in there, that is also slated to be a gated community. So that would also cut off that point of egress and ingress anyway, wouldn't it?
Well, it's not slated to be a gated community. However, the current landowner has expressed an interest in doing that. That would be something that would have to come back before the council, before it could become gated.
Yeah, but it's a shortcut now when they take-
Right now, it is a shortcut and the landowner who owns a number of those lots has expressed well, we would like to gate those at some point in time in the future. I'm gonna back up one slide just real quick. So we kind of went over, we kind of went over a little bit on these. So am I, is this safe to say that the board, if, if the city's gonna move forward, is this safe to say that a K five is an appropriate school for this area out here? That, or a K six, K five and K six are pretty close. Is that an appropriate assumption for the city to make as we move forward as part of this plan as opposed to a K eight?
I, I think at this point, I mean, you don't see, it would be kind of odd to have K fives and all of a sudden one K eight. Yolo currently has some space still where they can build out because I'm just trying to run some numbers and looking at this. We, that, Yolo could eventually get to, to what, nine hundred to a thousand? Is that what we're looking at?
I, you know, I don't have the numbers, but you're correct. Both Yolo and Orstembah High School have room to grow.
Yeah, they have spaces.
And as Mike has mentioned, right now Barrington has about five hundred and twenty-five students and it's full. And Hunt and Bonner Runner are currently probably more around the three thirty, three forty range.
So we would look at this school, this elementary school, depending on if we wanted to go K five or K six, which would give us a little bit more room to have, or, or see Yolo be, you know, a middle-sized middle school rather than a large-sized middle school. We'd look at this being around four hundred to four hundred and fifty kids, basically the elementary school.
Right, and again with, you know, just the numbers I've played with, this area would generate about a hundred and eighteen students for Yolo. And that's just this area though. I mean, there's other areas of town that could grow. I mean, there's other areas of town that could grow. But that would bump up Yolo's enrollment to about seven fifty.
Yeah. So if you were to go for schools of four hundred, it's, you know, I mean, Barrington being five something now, so they're sending three classes over. So they're sending ninety kids over basically as sixth graders. The others are sending two over. And so that's another sixty, so if you do that, I mean, you're running around, you're getting close to, to three hundred when you get to that. The other question I had deals with adjacent to the park site. Now, I, I guess the question I have is, is the fields that are on the backside of Barrington that are fenced in, are those available to pub, for public use?
Mike and I are working on making those available. They're locked, you know, uh, but what we have is that we've issued a key to the city and so on. Uh, we have, uh, the, the gates are open in the evenings because of our night custodial staff locks them after, you know, about nine o'clock. We have some practice out there now. And they're locked during the day unless we have, you know, our students go out into the fields. But to answer your question, we open them at night, they're, they're closed around nine. And then on the weekends, they've been locked, but we have made a, a key available to the city. And they have Saturday staff working their parks. They open them up around eight in the morning and then they close them up whenever the practices or games are done with the Little League right now. So we make them available.
Yeah, because I know when we put the, the security fencing around what was old Yolo now is Hunt, that basically shut out those fields for usage, is completely correct.
Yes, and basically, all of our campuses are completely fenced now with all the security measures that we've taken in the last year. They've become as safe as we can hopefully make them during the day. We continue to work on them and we will more this summer. But the downside is in they're locked up when we're not using school.
And so, and so that's what I'm kind of looking is if we build this adjacent to a park site, do we fence in the park site or do we have our kids go outside of our security fencing to participate in any type of activities that they may do? That's kind of the question I think we'd have to decide.
Right, and, you know, and, and Mike and I've talked to, you know, there's some districts where you may have a standalone restroom facility that straddles that fence line where you have access from either side. That you may have a, a roll down door in the middle of the restroom that you can lock it so you can't get into a school on the weekends. And then you roll it back up during, you know, general usage time. But there's a lot of ways you, I think you could utilize having an adjacent park for a school. As Mike said, there's positives, but I think the positives, I think our citizens and taxpayers get a lot more further money. When you have adjacent facilities, you can share parking lots, you can share even infrastructure. The downside is when you have a park next to the school, for the school, is, um, some of the undesirables that may hang out there during the course of the day. Ed might help me here with his background in law enforcement, but, you know, some districts actually have agreements with the city where you expand the boundaries of the campus during school hours and make that part of the campus so you can actually patrol it and close it. You know, I, a lot of neighbors would probably prefer, once they've lived next to a school or a park for a while, they didn't buy their home there because of the type of activity. So you also have to determine what type of usage do you want in that park? You put a restroom there, they're going to, people, people will be there from, you know, from sunup to sundown. If there's no restroom, they're going to be there for a while until they've got to leave to, you know, uh, go home for, you know, personal usage. But, so there's things that we, I think we ought to look at, um, and how do we control it? But my recommendation is if we can have this type of effort with the city, we ought to look at having an adjacent park that would, I think, benefit the school district and the community. Just have to be, you just have to be able to, you know, control it appropriately.
The only other concern I would have with just making sure that we have sufficient, um, roads to allow for good traffic flow. Because right now, as you go by, um, Hunt or Orstomba, that, that becomes very congested and can become very dangerous depending on the drivers and coming around. My house, in fact, where they hit that, our street curb.
Well, you know, at Barrington, there's that parking area on the south side of the campus. It's kind of in the middle of both the park and the school. I mean, you know, you, in large areas like that, there's never enough room for parents to park off street. You know, we've never, I don't think ever planned schools in California that would have the amount of parents driving their kids to school. So I think any type of enlarged parking area that could provide, you know, that the before and after school drop off and pickup would be advantageous to a school as well or buses. So, um, again, your, your example of having a business park next door to provide that overflow parking, that's a benefit of a business park. I'm not too sure if that's a benefit of a school during school hours of having a business park, park next to, my, next door.
People in the business park trying to get in.
Right.
While people coming in and dropping.
Parking might be a plus, I'm not too sure what the others would be. Especially in an elementary school. With a high school, you know, it might be opportunities for, you know, a job, uh, RLP types of jobs and career experiences. But an elementary school would probably be better, be centered, probably be better to have it centered so that you'd have it, you know, easily, you know, a, a walking distance for all the residents in that area.
What's our sphere of walking right now for elementary schools?
For, uh, one mile.
And so this would all fit in within a.
Yeah, especially if you put it near, maybe like where the PMR six would be. Or three.
Would there be sidewalks planned? You know how some, some neighborhoods don't have sidewalks and others do? Like Diablo's where the customs are, we don't have sidewalks, but where the semi-custom and that are, there are sidewalks. So would we plan sidewalks more or less?
We will plan sidewalks everywhere and then ultimately we would work with the developer on the V L D R, decide whether or not that requires sidewalks. But you can, you can pretty much bet that PMR area, the yellow, is, would all include sidewalks. One of the things I, I think is important and, and, and again, Board Member Wallace can speak to it. A lot of the conversations that occurred during the General Plan Steering Committee was walkability. And if you look along the perimeter here, you see a lot of green because, you know, this is all walkway. These are all open spaces. You know, there's a walkway along the canal out there, this is all walkway up in this area over here. So the idea is, is to provide a walkable community. And I've always had this conversation with people and I, and I try to tell them when they ask me about Newman. I say, well, you know, the thing that people need to think about is, if you're going to relate Newman to something, related to someone who's growing up, we really have someone, Newman's kind of a pre-teen right now. We're not really sure what we are, we, we like our downtown, we know what we like, but we haven't fully developed yet. We don't know where we're going to college, right? But a lot of the decisions that you make as pre-teen and early teens really affect where you go to college and some of those other things. That's what's occurring here. A lot of the decisions that we make here will determine what kind of community we're going to be in the future. Because this is really setting the next bar in level of, of service and level of quality we're going to be as a community. Remember, at some point in time, Davis wasn't the bicycle capital, you know? Now, it helps that they have a university there and that's very important. And, but, you know, they weren't always a bicycle capital. Livermore was always, at one point was a small town, right? And their demographics are different than ours, and I'm not saying, but why can't we dream that way? Now, with that all being said, there's an economic component to this. We don't get the prices that they get in Livermore, but what can we afford here? And that's what we plan on working with the developer and saying, hey, what kind of nice community can we provide? And saying, you know, walkways don't cost a super lot of money there, but do you have that? It provides a nice environment. And we've all driven down avenues where you see a sidewalk, small landscape strip, and then a wall. Or you've seen one that are kind of more, a little bit more lush, a little bit more trees, and it just provides more of walkability. You know, so, you know, we need to make those decisions. And that's what we're trying to do as part of this master plan, to set this up so we have a nice walkable community that, you know, when people look and they're moving to the west side and they have to decide whether they want to live, you know, to our neighbor to the north, our neighbor to the south, or to us, it really, it shouldn't be a question on where they need to move. And that would be obviously the city of Newman.
You used the term earlier, that, earlier in the meeting, but Newman is, is a charm. And I've been very impressed with the amount of students that still walk to school in our community. You just don't see that in many places anymore. I know we're working on a, a bike and walking pathway system that the city's, uh, uh, has a grant on. I, I would really hope that we could do something out there to encourage, you know, families to allow walk, kids to walk to school and walk home. I think like we used to, you just don't see that in many communities. But, uh, I think having it in, in the, you know, kind of the epicenter of the area would hopefully, you know, support that type of, you know, practice that we see now.
Sure, and then the city is actually working on a program right now, which is called Complete Streets. The Complete Streets Program, and the Complete Streets Program really talks about having pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists all working together on the streets and how do you provide a space for everybody that, you know, everybody's comfortable doing what they're doing in order to get to their routes.
And then where you put that high density residential will be important to that too, because a hundred and thirty units, there's going to be a lot of those, it'll be three and four bedroom units with a lot of kids. And hopefully that's a lot of walking kids, not a lot of.
Well, and even if, you know, and the reality is, and, and I'm going to go back to this in just one second. If we do PMR six, you could, you could put that fee, you know, the H D, I mean, even if you put it out here in this area here that feeds both the business park as well as you can get to the school site there. I mean, you're not going to be too far away from that school site if you're at PMR six.
If you do PMR six, would you change P four and P seven and just flip flop them?
Uh, P four would not change.
Okay.
Because, um, that's a low spot and it's really designed to handle the storm drainage. What we would do is take P three and the school and move that to six. And then we would have to find a different location for, for two. Or you move two over and the school comes over and there's three stays. Well, that's why I'm, you know, it's important that we do that. We can also, if you, you know, you could take P two here, you could add the school on this side. You know, up here, bring this down just a little bit, make that a sixteen acre site and then you would be adjacent to that collector there. That's another way that we could work that. So I think if you, if you indicate to us tonight that, you know, PMR six area is your preference for the school, we will work with our designers to find something. And again, it may go north and south this direction, or it may get turned a little bit east, west. We would work with you, we would work with our designers to figure out what's the best way to, to handle that situation.
Okay, now, using the P six and you have that connector road and you showed the walkability, the green, will that go along there then?
Yeah, the, the collector roads will have a level of walkability.
Okay.
To them. And that's all part of the, again, the complete streets. It's just that the, the landscape portion will probably not be, you know, when I see Jensen, you see that green there, you're probably thinking more of that's similar to what you see on Sherman Parkway, a nice green lush area. The one on the collectors probably wouldn't be as lush, but there would still be a separation, a separated sidewalk, meaning you don't put the kids right next to the curb. There'd still be a little bit of a strip, but it just won't be as, as healthy as what you see on Sherman Parkway. So that's kind of my presentation tonight. Again, I'm going to kind of go back to this. So if I'm hearing correctly, it's sounding as if a K five, K six school is, is really where we're going to be in. Currently, you're using the K five system, so I'm going to go ahead and include a K five is, is kind of where we're at with, with the school site. That four to five hundred student range, um, is, is an, is an appropriate size to, to design for. We don't have to discuss it, you don't have to give the answer now, but it would be helpful if, you know, in the future, you, you continue to have the conversation about, um, how the design of Barrington's working for you? And is that something that you think that you can carry into this development? If you do, it's going to put you ahead of the curve because then it's going to lead to more conversations about developer build and cost savings and time saving and, and other things. So maybe that's something, a conversation that you can have with your administrators and your educators, um, at that school site and can, and see what the pros and cons and if you're going to tweak it. Hey, if you could tweak this, what would you do? That would be, I think that would be, um, helpful for you as a board in the future. Um, and again, that's not something we need to know tomorrow, but in the not-too-distant future, we'll probably come back to you and say if that's something you're going to do.
Um, Michael, how many homes do you perceive to be inhabited before a school would be starting to be built?
Well, we, we haven't reached that level yet, but again, that's going to be a next level conversation between the district, the city, and ultimately the developer. Um, to see, you know, really, it's about timing it to where, you know, the school is built at the time you need to have it built. So how do, how do we do that? And, um, part of our situation that we need to answer from the city's perspective is, what is our growth rate going to be out there? Now, when people ask me, I tell them this is probably a fifteen to twenty year project. Um, if you just grow at an average rate of three to three and a half percent, that kind of puts you in the fifteen to twenty year. Because, yeah, the reality is, I mean, it's going to take engineers two years to design and start building the infrastructure just to get it out there. So then you start cutting into that timetable and as we all know, because, you know, you know, we're, we're getting older life, years go by really fast.
Yes.
You know, for, as, as a, as a parent who's just now getting their first teenager, you know, I learned that, hey, before you blink your eye, thirteen years has gone by. It all happened really fast to us. So originally you asked me, you think, you think a ten year build out? And I said, no, it's going to take a little bit longer because while infrastructure's nearby, we still need to get it there, we still need to design it, we still need to build it, so.
I also want to remind all of us that our other housing project area could again be Diablo Grande. And those, those students currently, we've got about eighty-five up there now that come down at K twelve. And the K five students are assigned to Bonita as their attendance area of school. And I can see, you know, because just, it's, this is the north end of town, this would be a, a logical place for the Bonita students to come if they didn't continue at Bonita or we just basically had to look at, you know, moving kids back. Right, I'll just say this, right now, about at least a third of our students out of Bonita are on intra-district transfers that are going north from town to attend Bonita. And that might be something we'd have to look at, how do we manage that to continue to bring the students from Bonita? I mean, to from Diablo Grande to Bonita. But that's another development we need to keep an eye on when we develop this kind of master plan.
How much room is there in Diablo Grande?
It could hold up to four, technically, the first phase has twenty-one hundred homes. There are four hundred twenty-eight now built.
Didn't they talk about?
There's supposed to be four thousand, but the Oak Flats, which is the one that's being built now, could have, would have two hundred, two thousand homes.
What triggers phase two?
Two thousand homes being built. And also I think it has a lot to do with world right now.
Yeah, but they're, obviously, you know, a lot of us remember twenty years ago, I guess,
When Panos.
That, uh, Diablo Grande was going to be their own community, their own schools, their own stores. And that, uh, their kids were not going to attend our public schools, they were going to go to private schools.
Well, I think a lot of that had to do with Panos, the way he perceived it. The people that are there now are very, very pleased with Newman. They love the idea of the, the quaintness of it. They're constantly asking me, you know, it's not going to get too big, is it? Yes, we would like to have some stores, it's kind of hard to go twenty-seven miles round trip to get a loaf of bread. But on the whole, they like it. Some of the problem is the children get the bus at twenty minutes to seven and get home at twenty after four. It's a long day. I think we've had, at the beginning of the school year, we have some that actually fall asleep and may even forget to get off the bus. But, um, on the whole, the parents, the people that are up there now are not the people that would have been there twenty years ago.
Michael, as a grandparent of twenty-one grandchildren, I'm concerned with keeping parents home. The businesses that we're putting in there, are we going to be able to attract some of the people that commute to the Bay Area so that they're gone so much of the time? Yes.
That's an excellent question and, and we're still working up the, the details on the, on the business park plan. But what our economic model, again, going back to the General Plan Committee, what we've always talked about is, is we're not going to do Amazon, we're not going to do coal, we're just not that large. But we can provide support services to those larger corporations there. So maybe it's a smaller business of, you know, maybe it's a forklift repair shop, you know, or somebody a little bit more mechanical and doing some of those repairs. That would, that would be our hope. And, um, yes, the idea is, is to get some more skilled employees into our business park and that's what we'll gear it up to. But ultimately, you know, we're going to, it's, it's going to, it's going to play a part in what's going on with our neighbor to the north. And we just don't, I, I would. going on with our neighbor to the north, and we just don't, I wish I could tell you a hundred percent yes, but we just don't have control of those economics until they start occurring and the economy gets turned around. You know, under this current economic situation, you know, this could be a thirty-year build-out, we don't know. But, you know, I'll continue to be an optimist and hope that, you know, fifteen to twenty is, is a good number to shoot for.
Could they do, uh, support computers?
I'm sorry?
Businesses that would support the, the commuters that are going out to work in computer places?
Yeah, again, we're, we're gonna do everything we can to bring more of the high-end jobs here, and we're, we're still working on that.
Just wanna keep the parents home with the kids.
Sure. And the idea is, again, a, a jobs housing balance of one-to-one is, is not a bad job housing balance, and this particular plan is showing you that we're gonna try to achieve a better-than-one-to-one. You know, we might be at one-point-one jobs per housing unit, and most communities strive to have one-point-one or better.
Michael, one thing, being on the Alliance Board, we just received a program from the Chamber of Commerce on the east side, you know those people over there? But they have less than three percent of shovel-ready land on the east side of the county to bring anything in. And Modesto itself hasn't updated its general plans since nineteen ninety-five. And so they are, that was what, the Chamber of Commerce came in and said yesterday, said, "We can't do anything because we have done meaning Modesto series." That whole area, they have done really no planning other than what's in front of their noses, and they have nothing shovel-ready at all. So that's why a lot of this stuff is looking to our neighbors to the north. And I think, as Michael's talked about with our business park and everything, the support agencies and even bringing in others, because they can't put them there. They just don't have anything for them. So we are, that's why we want to start gearing up now to get, you know, start our push to bring some of those places in here.
You'll see with the Turlock West Side Industrial Specific Plan, the WIS, you know, you're seeing that's starting to build out now. But again, if you're relocating to this area, and the farther west you go out onto Turlock, I think the more likely someone might say, "I would rather live in a smaller community." And Newman's now from the western edge of Turlock, you might be talking less than a half hour now. You know, it takes me thirty-five minutes to get to work, but it takes me almost fifteen minutes to get across town. But, you know, that, that WIS will probably put some people out into this community that are still looking for a smaller community to raise their families in. Yeah.
We're eighteen miles from the new Blue Diamond.
Pardon me?
We're eighteen miles from the new Blue Diamond facility.
So about, yeah, twenty minutes.
And, and this is one of the reasons why you'll see that the council made this decision in moving forward and doing the master plan. You know, the city, as most of you may or may not know, is, you know, the city is, is spending the funds right now to do this master planning and this environmental impact report. And the specific state law allows us to recoup that as development occurs. We see it as, as an investment into our community, we see it as an investment for our residents, because if we can capture some of the economic development that's gonna occur in the next five or ten years because the infrastructure's across the street and there is enterprise zone there, and things that are occurring in our neighbor to the north as well as Turlock on the west side with Blue Diamond, if we can capture some of that and maybe capture some of those jobs in our community, I think we're gonna be a better community for it. So, just, again, I'm gonna just, I'm just trying to recap. Back to the park site adjacent to the school, is it safe to, to say that the, the board would not be opposed to that provided that the district and the city work together on an appropriate design?
Is it the P six, the six?
Well, I didn't say, I, yeah, whether it's PMR six or wherever it is, but with the emphasis that design is very important.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna make that as part of our master plan, that, you know, that the, this, this council and the board support that, but again, design is very important on both sides on that.
And I think something I personally would like to see is that we, we take a look at where those parks are, we take a look at where these connector roads are, and try and think about this walkable community. And if we have the opportunity to make part of a collector road, have a nice meandering path with some bushes to keep the elementary kids from out of the traffic, and maybe, you know, you could, you could see how you get from most of the neighborhoods through a park, through some nice separated, yeah, some landscaped, some, some lush like you described it. Not having the sidewalk next to the street where you could get all the way, you know, get those kids over towards Harden so they could get to Yolo and, and Orstembah. That would be something I'd be very much in favor of. The appropriate crosswalks then, you know, to get them out of the different PMRs and into, onto the path.
Michael, have we thought about, you know, you, you were talking about using Harden Road as a cul-de-sac, like making that a pass-through walkway only of that collector road?
Yeah, and all likelihood, that, that would be an open-ended cul-de-sac that allows pedestrian access to Jensen, but not pedestrian and, and bicycle access, but not necessarily vehicular access. And that'll be part of this whole master plan process, as, you know, a lot of people like to live on cul-de-sacs. I'm guilty of it. But part of that also is, is, you know, how do you provide security but still allow passage through so people don't have to walk all the way around to get to one particular spot?
And part of our master plan was less cul-de-sacs, more grid, correct?
Yes, they, they like the grid pattern on there, too, so. And then, just lastly, and we talked a little bit about this, and it's, it's not a decision tonight, but just keep in mind developer-build options, and it may be inappropriate in the next year or so to think about having a presentation on developer-build options for, for the board, so you can, you can consider that maybe in fourteen or fifteen, 'cause that's about the time the conversations are gonna start being with, with the building interest that, that might be in this area here on how that school site is going to be built and what's the appropriate way of doing that, so. So with that, I think, that's all we really have, and this is, Ms. Ocasio will, again, she'll be the, the city lead on this. And if you have any comments, we actually set up a website for, for people to email in questions, and it's masterplan@cityofnewman.com. And we actually have a phone line, but I don't know it right now, so. Anyways, and I can, just want to thank you for your participation.
Thanks for inviting us.
Thank you.
Are you buying dinner, Michael?
Well, if there's no other questions or comments by either council or board members, I guess we can move to adjourn. Adjourn?
Yes.
Go adjourn. Thank you.
Oh, Mayor, I know we just did it, but I know it's not an important part, but the LAFCO policy that Councilmember Hutchins talked about, again, it was a one-to-one. What we're going to do as a community is, our general plan says we'll collect a fee to preserve ag land, but we're also looking at, and consistent with LAFCO policy, is putting a measure before the people that would put a growth, urban growth boundary on a certain part of the city, and that people vote on whether they're not to constrain urban growth at that point in time, and then that would meet LAFCO policy as well.
Good job. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm late. All right. Get home late.